Thanks, Alex. We tried very hard to get Megyn Kelly today, but she and Donald Trump are apparently all somewhere. As Katie mentioned, we're going to begin with a two-minute opening statements, candidates. And in an effort to be systematic and do things in order, we're going to start with Mr. Powell and work this way. And if you would, when you finish your statements or are cut off, whichever occurs first, if you would hand the microphone to the candidate immediately to your left when he gets down to the end, Katie will take over.
Good morning, everyone. It's an honor and a pleasure to be here with you this morning even before the cows get up. I'm JP Powell. I've been on the Winter Haven City Commission now on eight years. I've been involved with the city of Winter Haven for nearly 20 years, being involved with the Code Enforcement Board, Planning Commission, the Housing Committee, and so forth. And it's been a real honor and a pleasure, so I think I know my way around City Hall and I think I know a little bit about how the city of Winter Haven operates. And I'm married to Kim Travis Powell. I have one son, Travis Howard Powell, and one dog, PGI. I can't let her out. But I'll always look forward to meeting with our folks in the city to learn what their complaints are, what they like, and we move on from there. But it's always been an honor and a pleasure to serve the citizens of the city and will continue to do so. Thank you.
Hello. Good morning. My name is Willie Twyford, and I've been living in Winter Haven since 1967. Went to school here at St. Joseph's Catholic School right across the town here and went on to Winter Haven High School. From there, I went to Vanderbilt University. I graduated there and I went to Memphis State, University of Memphis Law School. I passed the bar in Tennessee and I passed the bar in Florida. And as soon as I found out about passing the bar in Florida, I moved back home. And I've been here ever since, except for a brief interlude with my wife, Elizabeth, who got her PhD up at NC State in Raleigh, North Carolina. I passed the bar up there, practiced law there as well. Came back down and worked for the state for about seven years, six years, and then private practice down for about two or three years on First Street South down here. What I'd like to see happen is what the city, is what I've put out in my chamber questionnaire, those four bullet points pretty much hammered out. I'm different than my opponent in that I'm looking for fiscal responsibility and looking to make sure that we can shore up our processes of the pension plan and making sure that we're not going to have another problem with selling city property if we do so in the future. And other than that, I'm just going to bring my experience as a lawyer here to the commission and hopefully that you can get progress done and make this a better place.
Good morning. I'm Nathaniel Nat Birdsong Jr. I'm a second-generation Winter Havenian. I'm the fourth-oldest of 12 kids that my mom and dad had, and my dad passed away when I was a senior in high school, even behind the 12 children. My momma, on the 28th of this month, will be 98. So I'm really proud to have served the city of Winter Haven and its citizens for over 13 years. I'm a retired Coca-Cola executive of 27 years. I have a BS degree in mathematics from Florida A&amp;M University, where I taught school, junior high, and senior high school in Fort Myers and Tampa. I have earned an MBA degree from Nova Southeast University and currently run the Florence Phila Community Development Corporation, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. As I said, I retired in 2000 and I've been on the commission since 2002. The city of Winter Haven has undergone great changes in the last 13 years, and we have been able to maintain our standard of living. We have been able to continue to develop this city in spite of the worst downturn in my recorded history and most of you all's recorded history, unless you were around in 1929, 1930. And we have not laid off anybody. We have not reduced our services. We are continuing to develop our infrastructure. So I want to continue the job that I've been working on for the past 13 years, and so that's why I'm continuing to run for the city commission. Thank you.
It's a great pleasure to be here. My name is Bob Jardine. I've been a resident in Winter Haven for a total of 30 years, living in the same home for 25 years. And in 1996, I graduated from PCC with an AS degree in Business Management, Marketing, and Finance. And right after that, I took a continued education course in real estate so I could get my real estate license. And I am a strong advocate for the disabled and the senior citizens of Winter Haven. And my main issue is getting a good and viable bus system that can take care of the seniors and the disableds, which we do not have at the present. The transportation system is a total disaster and needs great attention, and that's my priority number one. And I plan to serve with no special interest in mind, just to do the job for we, the people of the city of Winter Haven, and thank you.
Good morning. I'm going to stand up, don't worry guys, I'm not going to do this for every question, but I want to be able to see you for the opening statement. I'm Kemp Brinson. Two minutes, I can't tell you a lot about me, and I know that you are all going to be educated voters, and we'll check out my website, there's a little bit on the table out front. So I'm going to spend my two minutes talking about two things that are very important to me. The first one is efficiency. Two years ago, I served as co-chair of the Efficiency Committee for the city of Winter Haven. We wrote a report with 41 recommendations of ways to make the city run more efficiently, more transparently, and generate new revenue streams without raising taxes. There is no better example of the way that I will thoughtfully and carefully approach a leadership position with the city than that report, and I encourage you to go check it out, it's on my website. The second thing I want to talk to you about is the other important job of the city commissioner. In addition to serving on the city commission, you have another job. Your job is to be an outstanding ambassador and advocate for the city of Winter Haven in lots of other forums, on lots of other boards and committees. You have to be thoughtful, you have to be persuasive, and you have to be energetic. And I will make a very strong commitment to being an advocate for you, and I will be an outstanding advocate for the city of Winter Haven. I'm excited to be running. I'm excited about what this city stands to accomplish in the next few years, and I hope that you'll be excited to say, "I'm voting for Count." Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Pete Chiketto. Some of you I know, most of you I know, some I don't know. So it's a pleasure to be here this morning. I thank Katie in the chamber and as well as Bob and his law firm for putting this event on. For the past four years, I've been standing up for everyone in Winter Haven, not just the small interest groups, not just the developers, not just, you know, some other folks out there in their realm trying to get something done, but everybody. And you may or may not agree with everything I've done, and as a chamber, I will tell you, I've been a partner of business community for four years. I've gone to bat for the business community, I've gone to bat when it comes to what's doing right for Winter Haven. There's an issue on Lake Howard that we may not agree on, and that's the trail, and that's fine, but I didn't get elected to agree with everybody. I got elected to serve the people of Winter Haven, that's what I've done for four years, and that's what I will continue to do for the next four years. I have basically a wife that's been with Publix for 30 years. I've got an eight-year-old daughter that I care greatly about, and that is my life, is my daughter. And so I'm very active with her, with her school, with her dance, various things of that nature. And I'm very active in the community. I've been on the Boys Club Board for almost 12 years. I've been on the Salvation Army Board for about 12 years now as well. Those two boards are near and dear to my heart. One of them we provide for the children of our community, there's about 600 kids that go to three different clubs at the Boys Club. And then at the Salvation Army, we're doing about 1,000 feedings a week when it comes to feeding the needy. So those two are a very good, strong passion for me, but the main important factor is standing up for all of our citizens in Winter Haven. And for four years, I have done that. I've been fiscally responsible for this community. I have kept the public safe. I've looked out for the best interest of all of the public. And thank you for your time.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Carmelo Garcia, and I am your city commissioner candidate. I live in Winter Haven, and I absolutely fell in love with it when I came here two years ago. Finally made the move over. I'm really excited. And I have a degree in business administration. I am the owner of two companies, which I brought to Winter Haven, hoping that it can grow and bring job growth to the city of Winter Haven. I have two nonprofits. One of them is a foundation for kids, which I hold very dear to my heart, which is one of my passions, what I do. And I just hope that through your question, you get to know me a little bit better, and I can answer your questions with passion and as much passion and enthusiasm as these gentlemen did. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is James Edward Hogan. I'm a citizen here in Winter Haven. I grew up here in Winter Haven, attending Jewish primary, you had elementary and Northeast Junior High School. My family moved away for a while, but when I became an adult, I came back to Winter I'm a citizen that believes in a common sense approach to what I believe governing this city, and I, you know, I think that that's something that we have to get back to, make good decisions, especially when it comes to growth. I think growth is fantastic, that's how this city will progress. It just needs to be done responsibly. I worked for the Polk County Sheriff's Office for 31 years, started in 1981 and retired in 2013, January. I was a captain for the last six years, running the South County Jail. Oversaw a $100 million project where we actually renovated the South County Jail and added beds. That's not necessarily a good thing to have to add beds, but, you know, we needed to do that, and so I was a part of that. I have an A degree from Polk State College, a B degree from Warner University in Organizational Management. I've attended several leadership courses here in the city of Winter Haven. I think that through our help, I think that one of the things I'd like to see us do is to broaden the successful job in the downtown area, where we've really done a great job with growth and with businesses. I'd like to see us broaden that into the different quarters around the downtown area so that we can get even more growth in that area, so, thank you.
Thank you for opening statements, candidates. Continuing to proceed systematically and in order, we're going to start with Mr. Powell and again move down the line with these specific questions. Mr. Powell, in your response to the chamber's questionnaire, you state that the city's support of commercial development can boost ad valorem collections and therefore city revenue. What specific steps do you think the city could take that would support and foster commercial development? And if reelected, what would you do in an effort to assure that such actions are taken?
Downtown is probably one of our most important areas of our area. I do know that we have a number of businesses looking at the downtown quarter. We have to go out and there are some types of businesses that you can go out and try to bring in. We are in desperate need for, I think, some more restaurants, and we need some more local shops. I think we need a hotel to boost the downtown area. Not necessarily maybe like a boutique-type hotel or something. I know there's a place in Boston that I enjoy going to stay when we're up in that Boston area, and it's a beautiful little boutique hotel. And I always said I'd love to see one of those here in Winter Haven. But I think that if we can go out and booster some of our companies to try to sell downtown, I think once they come to see what downtown looks like, I think that they'll see that downtown Winter Haven is the place to expand their organization. And if we can do that, we just, we need to do whatever we need to do to make sure that happens.
You won't have to work out this at any rate. Mr. Twyford, in your response to the chamber's questionnaire, you raised concerns regarding the management of the pension fund, how city money is invested, and the use of utility funds to cover general expenses. If you were elected, what specifically would you propose to do differently while maintaining a balanced budget?
Well, the pension fund, as most of you know, is a defined benefit plan. And what that includes is that each employee and the general employees, what they're going to get is 3% a year. The state of Florida, I worked for the state of Florida a while back, and a senior management employee was getting 2% a year. When the new governor came in, Ray Scott, that pension plan was changed, and basically is because of the uncertainties of economics to fund that plan. So what happened was is that the new vested employees maintained their 2% plan, but all new employees had to go with the 401(k) type plans that they have. And what that does is reduces the risk that the city would have, and that's pretty much what we need. And we'd have to have a stopping point at some point in time to where we're going to be out of that situation where we're on the hook for a pension plan type of payments. You can go back to the reports, they're out there, they're available. In 2008, I believe we had a pension of 1.8 million that we painted, and it's now, I believe we were, in 2013, it was 5.3 million. So we need to get out of that game. We need to go ahead and get into the pension plan, it's a 401(k) pension plan, where we just pay a certain amount of money and then we're off the hook. So the risk is on the city for these up and down fluctuations of the pension plan, and our commitment to that. The money that we get from the water that we sell, that needs to be probably incorporated not to paying type of situations where we're just meeting the, you know, to pay our salaries and recurring the things that come up every year, but maybe take that money and put it towards capital improvement so we wouldn't have to go out and bond $13 million to build something to make the city nice. We don't have to take on all these projects at once. If we could use that water money wisely each year or two, we can fund that and make it on down the road, without having to get further and further debt. Thank you.
Mr. Birdsong, in your response to the chamber's questionnaire, you mentioned how critically important it is to strategically plan and to have a strategic plan. Does the commission currently have an adopted strategic plan? And if so, if reelected, what would you do in an effort to assure that the city stays the course? And if it doesn't currently have a strategic plan, what would you do to ensure that a strategic plan is developed, approved, and implemented during your next term?
Thank you. I need to take a part of my two minutes to introduce my wife for four to six years, Elizabeth Birdsong, is in the audience. And I also have two sons and four grandchildren. Now, to the question of the strategic plan, over the past 13 years, the city commission and the city, we have worked on goals and objectives, and a part of our goals and objectives process has been intertwined with what has been given as a vision and an updated vision for the city of Winter Haven. The specifics of a strategic plan, we have not developed the quote-unquote terminology "strategic plan." And in the coming years, I do know that for 2016, that we are planning to begin a strategic planning process with the city commission. And so we will be doing that in 2016.
Mr. Jardine, in your opening statement and in your campaign materials, you mentioned the need for improvements to the current bus system. What specific changes do you recommend? And if elected, what specific proposals would you have regarding how the associated costs would be funded?
If I heard correctly, the first thing I would do is get the pending lawsuit that's pending. I would definitely get that taken care of as soon as possible, so you don't have a hammer hanging on over what I have with a lawsuit pending. I think that's been dragging out too long. Is there a responsible on the city's part, the commission, and the city manager's part? It should be taken care of as quick as possible. I talked to some of the commissions, and they've been saying the same thing for six months, and it still isn't settled. That's a step in the right direction. How can you advance when you've got a burden like a lawsuit hanging, but not taking care of that? So I think that's the major step. And then the next step would be getting a viable bus system within the city itself, like the Smart Shuttle, to get people, senior citizens and disabled, to go around the city to help the business sustain themselves here, which we don't have. And as far as any investments, I think we shouldn't do nothing as far as any light improvements like trails and paths, that should be tabled for a while till the lawsuit gets settled. Any beautification act should be tabled till the lawsuit gets settled. I think that's one thing that, it's just like in your own home or business, you've got a major lawsuit, you've got to take care of it. That's only sensible. And we're just not doing it the right way, I think. And that's about all I got to say on it. Thank you.
If anyone would like to sponsor a second microphone, I'm hoping to discuss afterwards.
Thank you.
Mr. Brinson, in your opening statement and in your response to the chamber's questionnaire, you referenced that you served as co-chair of the Citizens Efficiency Review Committee. And that committee made over 40 recommendations to the city. Which of those recommendations do you believe have been most successfully implemented? And of those which have not been implemented, which one would be your top priority to implement if elected?
Thank you. Yeah, the efficiency was a wonderful experience, and I think, you know, a lot of what's in the report is very high quality. The most important recommendation that we need to move forward on immediately, and this was detailed in the report, is strategic planning. We've had, I mean, we've kind of known this for a while and haven't done it, and it's time to bite the bullet and do it. I know that staff has pushed forward an effort to do some strategic planning, but that's largely been staff-driven and the commission has okayed it. And, you know, I'm sure that the current commissioners would say, "Yes, we're leading the effort for strategic planning." It's really staff, and the commission has just approved what staff has put forward. And I think the commission really needs to drive forward with strategic planning, and most importantly, the commission needs to be reviewing those strategic plans and seeing what the progress has been made, what progress has been made towards completing those plans as time goes on. In terms of recommendations that have been done, I think that most of the ones that have been successfully implemented have been more stats-level type things, things that staff can implement on their own. One of those has been the reduction of garbage from two days a week to one day a week. That was already underway when we did our report and has largely been completed at this point. So that's one example. But the big picture stuff, the stuff that's really a commission-level responsibility, has not been done, and strategic planning is the top priority there.
Mr. Chiketto, in your response to the chamber's questionnaire, you stated that annexation is a primary opportunity, and it would allow the city to increase overall taxable value and thus revenues. If you were reelected, what steps would you advocate that the city take in pursuing areas for potential annexation? And in the case of residential areas where a referendum would be required, what would the city do in an effort to convince the residents of those areas that annexation would be to their benefit?
Thank you. First of all, annexation is important, and I think we can look at our big partner out there called Legoland. Legoland has been outside the city since they came to town. I'd love to have them be a partner with Winter Haven. How cool would it be to get off of US-27 and see what I would consider Lego-blocked lights coming down to get into the park, or a theme from US-27 that says, "Welcome to Winter Haven" and "Welcome to Legoland," to get them into the park? The second part of that question was annexation of infill communities in particular, you know, the areas that we provide water and sewer to and two-thirds of our services to, but yet they don't pay for services like the library, they don't pay for services like our recreation facilities. So to address that annexation concern, it's simply going to those homeowners and convincing them that Winter Haven is a great place to live, work, and play, and it's cheaper than you're probably paying in the county. And we don't have a fire tax, we don't have a fire fee, so that would go away. If we can show them that there's a zero increase in their taxes, then it makes sense for them to annex into Winter Haven and become part of our great city.
If you have not turned in your question yet to Jennifer, please lift up your note card, and Jennifer will come and grab that for you as well.
Mr. Garcia, in your response to the chamber's questionnaire, you refer to several opportunities that the city has, and specifically mentioned the redevelopment of the Channel Lakes Complex, Noremeo Hall, and the building of the city civic center. Your response states that the city could do all this and spend minimal taxpayer dollars. If elected, how would you propose to pursue these opportunities? What minimal city tax dollars do you think would be required? And what revenue source or sources would be used to fund the cost in excess of the city's contribution?
Yes, I actually did say that, and it's really easy. I'm going to go ahead and explain the plan. It's basically what you call partnerships with major companies. If you, I'm sorry about that. I usually speak aloud, so I hold it down. Partnering with corporate companies, big companies, for example, Legoland. Everybody's so worried about the Cypress Garden area, and nobody's worried about anything before that. The building that we have right across the street from City Hall is a great opportunity for the city to go ahead and get that. We should negotiate with major companies and partner with them so that they can go ahead and help the city pay for stuff that we actually need to attract people to come down to Winter Haven. Like Commissioner Chiketto here said, we need to make sure that people have something to come and see. Downtown area, there's no bus connections, there's no anything. So why don't we partner with companies and make sure that we have something for people to actually come and see? I believe that if we partner with companies and we do it responsibly, without making any promises to anybody, or selling any property, or doing anything, but just saying, "Hey, we have a wonderful city, we want you to come and see it. We have Legoland, but we don't have anything else to keep them coming back. They don't have anything else to go see but Legoland." So they're going to come, spend a night, visit Legoland, and then go where? Orlando, Kansas City, everywhere else. But if we bring stuff down that people can actually stay a week or two, we will make money, we will grow, and then we can worry about everything else. So we need to partner with other companies to make sure that they see the value, the worth of coming to Winter Haven, and not just focusing on two areas, downtown and Cypress Lakes. Thank you.
Mr. Hogan, in your response to the chamber's questionnaire, you stated that the city should continue efforts to bring new businesses that are in line with current businesses, and specifically referred to CSX. And you mentioned the use of responsible incentives that keep us competitive but allow for quicker economic impact. If elected, what specific types of incentives would you recommend? And how would you measure the economic impact in return on those investments?
What I was talking in reference was, you know, CSX, of course, is a great opportunity. I know that we are, we're trying to recruit, and they are trying to recruit, businesses into that particular area. What my concern is that the offering, whether it's tax-free situations, or impact-free, or lower impact, those kind of things are good, and it actually brings, will help bring those companies in. However, I just, I believe that it should not be a situation where we decide it's such a long-term break that the impact of, that the city would get would just be too long. We should look at the surrounding areas, and like I said, and be competitive, but be responsible with it, and not give away the city for those companies unless we can realize a quicker impact. We need to be able to get tax dollars, and the citizens of Winter Haven need to be able to have those particular revenues quicker.
Now we will start with the audience questions. So if you do come up with another question while we are doing this portion, just lift your card in the air, and Jennifer will grab it from you. will grab it from you. You ready?
A few of the questions have been directed at specific candidates, so I'll start with those. The first is directed at Mr. Powell. What will you do to generate more business interest in Winter Haven? And what is your specific plan?
We have to have public-private partnerships. And to be able to do more, to bring more business to our community, we have to form the business-private partnerships and, or the city, our government-private businesses or partnerships. And number one, we have to work closely with our Chamber of Commerce to help promote our Chamber of Commerce and to help the Chamber partner with us to get our name out there. Winter Haven Economic Development Corporation, we have to work with them. Central Florida Development Council, which plays a big part in not only Winter Haven but Polk County and the surrounding areas. So, we have to form that private-public partnership to encourage them to work with us and to help generate business and bring businesses to this area.
This one is directed to Mr. Bertholz. Says, "Without a strategic plan, how do we have a quote roadmap end of quote for our city, for where our city is to go?"
Thank you. We have a strategic initiative that we pursue. One such example, the whole idea of goal-setting is what we have pursued. When you talk about the economic development, a strategic initiative that was followed was basically forming the Economic Development Council. And we, the city, pays for that. Over the course of the last fifteen years, there have been visioning that basically was from the citizens. The city took that vision on and tried to implement and did implement it. So, when you say strategic plan and strategic plan, we've had strategic initiatives that we have pursued and we're continuing to pursue. When you, when you think about the development that has taken place, I see some former commissioners out here. When we were talking about downtown redevelopment, well, you may not call that a strategic plan, but it was a strategic initiative that was implemented. So, the thing that we have to pursue is what we've been doing calling goals. Some people may say that we have, in fact, have a strategic plan. But what we're going to do is put it in a document, like the visioning documents that we have. So, those are the things that we will be pursuing. Thank you.
This one is directed to Mr. Garcia. Says that you have recently moved your office...I didn't write this, but it looks like it could be my handwriting. And I apologize whoever did write this. My handwriting is really bad. You've recently moved your office from...oh, by your pardon. You've recently run for office in Kissimmee. When did you move to Winter Haven and why choose to run in Winter Haven, being so new to the community?
I did. When I first left New York, I did not want to come to Florida. I hate the heat. It's not my friend. And I didn't want to come here. But my mom, who's sitting outside, told me, "You need to come visit." The minute I landed and came out of the airport, I saw how beautiful it was. And I just fell in love with Florida. And Kissimmee was my first stop. And I stood there. I've always wanted to help my community. Everywhere I go, in New York, Florida, Chicago, wherever I've been, I've always helped my community. In Kissimmee, I ran for commissioner twice. Unfortunately, I have not been successful in winning a seat. But I keep fighting for what I believe in and I keep fighting for what I believe the people need. And I decided to run, I moved here in March of this year. I've been to Winter Haven before. My nonprofit organization serves in the community. And we do events, like the one we're doing at Regions for November, the weekend of November for Thanksgiving. We're gonna be giving away turkeys to homeless families. So, those are the type of events we do. Why do I want to run for city commissioner here in Winter Haven? I believe that it, you know what, it's not working. I mean, we all make mistakes. And mistakes have been made. But it's time to stop thinking like the old and start thinking about the new. Stop making the same mistakes over and over and over again. We need to start keeping in mind, focus on what's important, which is being business town. We're running and we're serving the people of Winter Haven. Some of the mayor said that we need to bring companies over. Everybody's saying we need to bring companies over. No company wants to come to Winter Haven because they know that there's no people, no business, so they're gonna come here to die. So, if you grow the people, if you grow the things that we need to bring here, like Orlando has, what is it, Disney and all these other places, if we grow and we get more stuff that people want to come here and do, then we're gonna get those companies to want to come here instead of us pursuing them, giving away taxes and impact fees. That's a no-no. Because we, thank you.
I have to tell you, I was envisioning having to get rough with somebody for going over. So far, you haven't given me that opportunity. This one is directed to Mr. Jardine. This question says, "It's great to have a more helpful transit system. How do we offer this to students in our school system for free?"
Could you repeat that again?
Yes. He said, "It's great to have a good transit system. How would we offer that to the students in our school system for free?"
Number one, the transit system. We have two types of transit systems that's available for the city. And that's the power transit that goes door-to-door and the smart shuttle that goes from quadrant to quadrant, which used to go from door, from curb to curb, which they cut out July 6th, and now it's going quadrant to quadrant. And we've got bus drivers that's working eight hours a day, riding in a circle, picking up two passages a day, when they used to pick up thirty a day. And that's been going on since July 6th. And nobody's doing anything to change it, modify it, or anything else. So, that's the one that needs to be getting squared away. And I'd like the city to try to apply for the grant to take over the smart shuttle from Lakeland and keep it in our own city and take care of our own people is what we need to do. And I think it's an easy task, just apply for the grant like we did with the bus system when the research started to get the bus system thirteen years ago. And a good system is gonna help us getting strategic business people to move into downtown that's gonna stay a while. We used to have a bakery downtown. That was a striving business that did terrific. It used to bring people downtown. Do we have a bakery down? I don't think so. That would be one initiative to bring people downtown on a regular basis. Plus, maybe going to the avenue of computer software or making small parts for computer light industry. That's another way they could go to bring people to the city. And, but we need to get more strategic on allowing what type of business to come to the basic downtown area. We don't need fifteen restaurants downtown for sure. We need to get the people to use the restaurants. So, they gotta be more specific on what their type of business they're allowing to come into the community.
This question is directed to Mr. Chikado. "In 2013, you were removed from the CFRPC, WHEDC, and TDC boards for non-attendance. How do you justify this? And how do you have proper time to commit to being an advocate for Winter Haven?"
Well, let me clarify the record first. The word "removed" is a little misguided. First of all, every year, we change seats in terms of liaison boards. Secondly, if you go look at the record, yes, the CFDC, the, I apologize, Bob, that you've rattled off so many boards, it's kind of gone confusing. But the boards, we change hands every year. And if you go look at the record, if you look at the city commission record for four years of meetings attended, everybody is guilty. So, of missing liaison meetings. If you look at the TPO board meetings that I was a part of, I attended eighty-six percent of the meetings. You say, well, it's not a hundred percent. I'm the only commissioner on the board that has an eight-year-old daughter or a child under the age of eighteen. I'm the only commissioner that works out of town. And to say that these boards aren't important is not true. They're all important boards. So, what I've done as a commissioner is try to make time, the best time available and meet meetings that are now, be it conference call, or ways that I can continue to work full-time and make adjustments in our schedule. I'm a hundred and ten percent committed to the city of Winter Haven. I grew up here. I ran four years ago with intentions of looking out for the future of our town. And the future of our town is a great town and city to be a part of. And that's my intention, is to continue moving that agenda forward. You'll see fourteen million dollars in new projects coming on soon. Those are mostly projects for recreation. Those projects are gonna help sustain our community and put us in the right direction for moving things forward. So, with that being said, I appreciate it. Thank you.
This question is directed to Mr. Twyford. "How many city commission meetings have you attended? And have you done any work on any city boards or city committees to help you prepare for the job as commissioner?"
See, I started going to city commission meetings back, I think, when the landings issues came up and they were gonna move the pool. And they were talking about moving the artist complex. My brother, some of you know Eddie Twyford, he was attending those meetings. And really, it's only about maybe two-hundred yards away from my house. I live on Lake Silver. And so, I started attending because I'm on the board of directors at Surtoma, the Winter Haven Greater Youth Baseball League. And my children played out there, all three of them. And, you know, we, that place has been in disrepair since we were there. And it kind of hasn't changed much. It's when I played there. So, I started going to those meetings at that time, trying to find out what the process was and what happened inside, where these monies were gonna be spent. And total, I don't really know. I don't have a number to put on it. But, you know, I probably would say at least twelve a year I would go to. And sometimes more frequently than others when issues I was interested came up. I'm a lawyer and I understand a lot of the questions that are being proposed to the commission. I also, you know, think that I ask people that when I don't know something, even in law, I ask other lawyers to help me, you know, find the answer to questions. I can do all the research. I think my experience as a lawyer would help me and be able to go ahead and make decisions and also to get your research to the issues that are before the commission. I think that, you know, that one thing, being a lawyer, sets me apart from my opponent. And I think that, you know, is probably what's kind of neat. I would never have voted to go with the landings deal to begin with. And the handling of the lawsuit, I disagree with how that's come about as well. I think that my experience as a lawyer and the knowledge that I have as being a lawyer would be helpful to the commission.
There are some other questions directed specifically at candidates, but there have been a couple of folks who did have questions directed specifically at them. So, I want to make sure we give everybody a fairly equal opportunity. So, this one, I will, this question will be directed to you, Mr. Hogan. "Since Normeo Hall has been closed, our city is in great need of a public space to hold community events, wedding receptions, nonprofit fundraisers, et cetera. We're the only city in Polk County without this type of facility. What would be your plan if elected for the city to rectify this issue?"
I think what the city has already started, reference to Normeo Hall, such as, you know, I think there's a question of whether or not that property should be turned back over to the city based on the city actually giving that land to the state. And if we can't get it back that particular way, then we should, and I think we made a one-million-dollar bid. I think we should do whatever we can to try and get it back, if that means we have to up our bid, or if that means we need to continue to pursue the state and its legislatures to see if we can get it back based on the fact that the land was donated by the city.
Thank you. Well, after that last statement I made, someone brought in a question specifically for Mr. Brinson. And it's two parts. Part one, "Has the preparedness of city commissioners been lacking in the past few years?" And secondly, "What steps would you take to ensure that you arrive at meetings well-prepared for the meetings?"
Thank you so much for that. I think that preparedness on the commission has been a problem. I think if you go to a commission meeting, you don't walk out of that meeting thinking, man, they really knew a lot about that issue before they showed up here today. I am going and have already structured my life and my schedule so that I can spend considerable amount of time preparing for meetings. I've made a pledge openly to be the most transparent commissioner in Winter Haven history, which means that when I do research on agenda items that are coming before the commission, I will post the results of what I found out, the questions I've asked, the answers that I've gotten, the documents I've received on my website. So, you can see exactly what I've been doing to prepare for meetings so that you know that I'm going into those meetings prepared. And if there's anything you think that I've missed or have not seen that needs, that I need to see, you'll know that I'm deficient in that area before the meeting and can bring those things to my attention as a member of the public. So, I will be very transparent and show you exactly what I'm doing to prepare for those meetings. So, there won't be any question of whether I'm prepared for meetings.
This is a question that is directed to all the candidates. And what I will do is I'll pose the question and then Katie can give you the mic, Mr. Powell. And we'll let Katie rest as you all pass the mic down. But the question is, "Please indicate your current position on a fire fee."
I was the only commissioner that voted to keep it on the agenda, to keep moving forward with it. And the reason I voted for it was I did not want to see us cancel the public hearings. I wanted to know what the citizens thought. I wanted to know what their arguments were. There's good things, there's bad things. The one thing that my current position is, it's gone away. It's not gonna happen. So, I really don't have a position on it any further.
My position on the fire tax is a tax. It's, I mean, people can call it a fee, but it's basically a tax and I'm against it. And that's because of, you know, we have enough money in our budget and how much money do we take in? That if it's properly managed, we don't have to go out and raise those taxes or raise those fees. You know, I was shocked when that was brought up at first anyway, because I think it's because when government sees these other types of available sources of income, they don't really think of anything more than just go ahead and put a fee on somebody and get more income. As opposed to, you know, making the hard decisions. I like the general pension fund. And I want to point out that doesn't affect the fire or the police pension fund. Those are different funds. Those are different types of situations. And those people and those type of class of those pensions do have a, you know, they're harder to find, those kind of people. And, you know, those things can be justified if they do, you know, a job, they risk their lives. But the fire tax is this, you know, it comes in as a little bit and then sooner or later, they can change that whenever they want. They can raise it way, way up. And the citizens don't have any chance to say, wait, stop, hold the brakes, you know? It's like a floating type of tax. They can assign to any, you know, time they want to come up with a new budget. And they look for something, more money. They can just tap that fire tax and people wouldn't even know it. So, that's why I'm against it. And I can't really think of any reason to be for it.
The fire assessment, we voted not to implement it. And the reason for that is that initially, when we were looking at the projects that we wanted to fund, we wanted to fund those projects in their entirety. We had been told that it would take a certain amount of funding, which was in the neighborhood of thirteen million dollars. And in order to fund a thirteen-million-dollar bond with our great rating that we have, you would need a dedicated financial source to basically ensure that you... would need a dedicated financial source to basically ensure that you could repay the bond. And so therefore, we were looking at ways, and the fire assessment was such a way. But subsequent to the final vote on implementing that fee, we looked at funding a lesser bond and being able to do that without any fire assessment, but having it tied to the avalour rate that we currently have. So the projects that we decided that we needed to implement, one thing's a fact, in the city of Winter Haven, we have not had any substantive projects in the neighborhood of recreation in over fifteen years, maybe even longer than that. So we needed to do some things, and therefore, we were able to fund these projects without raising taxes and without actually implementing a fire assessment fee. So we have done what we have been doing over the past thirteen years. We have been able to manage the monies of the city and do things that we need to do to improve for all of the citizens. Thank you.
Same question.
Same question.
Well, only the fire assessment. How would you stay with the fire assessment? The fire assessment thing?
Yes.
Well, fire assessment, see, I look at it through a different avenue, rather than always looking for funding. There's other means to serve fire department. I've been involved in the fire service for several years. I've been to Texas Fire and A, Texas A&amp;M Fire Academy, which is the largest academy in the world. I've been at Houston Fire Academy. I've been in the fire service for seven years. And there's other means of handling fire departments. You got the volunteers that you could start up in the city, where the county contributes, they have a quota, you have so many structured firearms, the county pays the city a certain amount of dollars, you got grass fires, the county pays a certain amount of money. So you don't necessarily have to right away jump on a bandwagon to have a paid fire department. A volunteer fire department can do just as good as a paid department. And it would be good for the kids, the young twenty-one-year-olds to thirty-year-olds, to participate, and that would help more participation in the community with the volunteer section to participating. So that's what I would look at, rather than going out and spending more money when you could do it with volunteers. And so many cities around the country, that's all they have. In Texas, that's the majority, and they do a fine job. So that's all I got to say.
On the fire fee, I think that we made a real mistake in the way that we approached the fire fee. There's no question that there are significant large property owners in the city of Winter Haven who are heavy burdens on our fire system, who do not pay avalour taxes, therefore, they're not paying for the heavy burden that they impose on the system. The fire fee is one way to bring those property owners into the tax base, so that they are helping contribute to the system that they're using. The problem is, we did not clearly think through what the political implications of the fire fee were. And if you're going to raise taxes and impose new fees on citizens, you better be able to justify it. And we were not able to justify it, and it died due to political pressure from the citizens. I would have supported the fire fee if it had benefited the fire department, and it did not. I would have supported the fire fee if there had been a corresponding avalour tax reduction to offset the additional burden on people who already pay taxes, and as proposed, it did not. And I would have supported the fire fee if it had had a more streamlined, easier-to-receive benefit, or, excuse me, easier-to-receive exemption for truly destitute homeowners who cannot afford it. And there are certainly those people, we do not want to make, did not want to make that a regressive fee. But that, there was a process for that as proposed, but I thought it could have been simpler and easier. So those are the only conditions under which I would have supported the fire fee. Because it's died, because we tried and it failed, you know, so gloriously, we're probably not going to be able to bring it forward again for a while. So I don't know if that's something that can move forward now or not. It may be something to look at in the future. But I wish that we'd had more foresight going into it, and we might have been able to justify it to our citizens if we had.
All right. First of all, I want to back up and touch on one subject I didn't have enough time for, and I'll get to the fire fee really quick. That is, that is my record. You can point fingers at a liaison board all day long, but go to the commission meeting record for four years, and I can tell you, standing here in front of you today, I've done my research. The number one commissioner on the board for missing zero meetings, Stephen Honeycutt. Number two, myself, I've missed one meeting in four years. The worst attendant is not running for reelection, but you'll figure it out. There's only five of us up there. Okay, so, onto the fire fee. The fire fee, I couldn't agree more with what Kemp said. We didn't have a good plan. We had a plan that was going to generate one-point-six-million dollars. It was a combination shell game. When you take money from the general fund of one-point-six-million, fund recreation projects, that's what we were going to do. You would have had to fill a void in the fire department, and that's where the fire fee came from. It would have cost me eighty-six dollars a year, not a big deal. I would be glad to pay it. However, the fire fee should go towards new buildings, new employees, new equipment, and new abilities to provide service for our citizens, not recreation projects, and that's what we headed in the budget for. I came up with a creative plan that said we're going to take a one-time sale of assets and put it towards the projects, the thirteen-and-a-half-million-dollar projects. We're going to bond six-point-two-million dollars. Not going to raise taxes with that six-point-two-million, and we don't need a fire fee. I'll be glad to look at a fire fee in the near future if need be, that would indicate to our citizens that we're going to buy new equipment, we're going to put new employees on the streets, and that we're going to build a new fire station with a fire fee. I'm glad they support that. But the current fee that we have in place did not do that. That's all. Thank you.
Fire fee, I don't support it. Any fee that raises taxes on the citizens for other projects other than what they say they do is totally irresponsible. And going back to the meetings of Mr., the commissioner, Chicheno, can miss the meetings and whatnot, I'm going to be very honest with you. The people elect the commissioner that can support them and be there for them, and when we're taking vacations, spring break vacations and missing meetings, that's not very responsible. And on more than one occasion, you have missed meetings. And how is it that you're going to miss a meeting on very important issues like a fire fee, for example? And then take the money that comes from the fire fee to build parks, for example, in my statement, you can see it online, a hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand-dollar project to improve parks like Ship Park, Girls' Town Park, Rotary Park. These are issues and fees that these people should be, these companies, these organizations should be contributing to the city, instead of the citizens of the city paying taxes like fire fees that are not going towards the fire department and building new firehouses that are closer to other sections. So this is why I'm against fire fees, if, like Kemp said, if it's not going towards one specific and it doesn't have a specific, why approve it? Why even bother bringing it up if it's not going to go to serve for the purpose that it was meant to be served? So as a fire fee, I am totally opposed unless it's going for what it's exactly meant to be, which is the fire department going that and helping out in those areas. Thank you.
The fire fee, I agree that it's basically a tax, and it's just like any other tax. So anytime we are going to take money from our citizens, we better have a good reason for doing it. We need to be able to justify it. I think as you move forward in any city or any county, those sort of things are going to come up. Those, looking for different revenue sources are going to come up, and we have to look at those things and make good, responsible decisions. Thank you.
All right. We have time for one more question for each candidate. And if your question does not get asked, I'm sure the candidates may have a couple minutes afterwards to hang behind to answer your question, so.
Some other specifically directed questions have come in, and this one is from Mr. Bertschel. It says, "A strategic plan to be successful requires compromise, consensus building, and five commissioners pursuing a single agenda, not five separate agendas. If re-elected, how would you work to build a more focused, committed commission?"
One of the things that is a prerequisite for serving as a city commissioner, and that is that the decisions that you make have to be for all of the people and not just for a specific group of people. Over the past years, the major decisions that we have agreed upon has taken a toll on us all. We sit and we debate and we talk, but at the end of the day, I think if all of the commissioners, and this has been the case in the past, when the facts are presented, everybody can basically review those facts and come up with the best decision possible. Now, how do we build that on the commission? One of the ways that we've had to do it is, especially over the past year, two years, is have more workshops, so there's time for discussion. You can't build consensus sometimes in the time period that we have in the commission meetings. But by having the workshops, then we're able to enter, react. Also, every year, we have had a goal-planning retreat, and in that retreat, we go over and establish goals. And the process of building consensus is that there is no way around it. There are five of us and three rules. I mean, that's just, that's just the way it is. And so that's what we do, is we set, we discuss, and then we have to vote. And we can be disagreeable, but not be really disagreeable. All right?
This question I'll pose to Mr. Powell. How adequately do you feel the city's investment is in its infrastructure? And what percentage of the city's budget should be dedicated annually to catch up and keep ahead of depreciation?
I want to know who wrote that question, because it's very early in the morning to be answering these types of questions. Why would you repeat that again?
I'll try. I'll speak loudly to say, Katie, the footsteps. How adequately do you feel the city has been investing in its infrastructure? And what percentage of the city's budget should be dedicated to catch up and stay ahead of depreciation?
To stay ahead of depreciation, without knowing exactly how much you've got to work with, it's hard to determine. The planning, we have quite a few projects that are going to be completed this year, but you have to rely on staff, because they're the ones that are trained in those fields. I'm not trained in those fields. So when we sit down to do the budgeting process, we find out exactly how much has to be put towards the infrastructure. For instance, our roads, every year, there's a certain number of dollars that are set aside to do road improvements, sidewalk improvements, utility improvements. And all those figures, we have to have, we just passed the new budget, they'll already be working on those figures for next year. So we have to, we have to really rely on staff to give us those answers, because, like I said, I'm not trained, or I'm not, you know, I don't know what it costs per linear foot to fix a road or a sidewalk or to improve. So I rely on staff a lot. If I don't know the answer to a question, I go in and I find the answer.
This question I'll direct to Mr. Twyford. Says, "The Winter Haven has a strong pedigree and has earned a national and international reputation for excellence in the arts. What can the city do in an effort to preserve and enhance its commitment to the arts?" And then it goes on to say, "Are tickets still available for Sister Act?" Mr. Powell, I don't know that you need to comment on that last part.
Yeah, I'll comment on Sister Act. I saw it on Friday, and it is phenomenal, so fabulous. So get your tickets, only if you see that.
Well, that was kind of a comp kind of question, but I'll try to get to the first part. I mean, I'm a fan of the arts, I'm a fan of any type of recreational activities, and, I mean, I think it's true that Winter Haven does have a national, if not international, reputation for the arts. And I'm really involved in that, and I've been to many meetings, and Kemp speaks up and tells us what's going on down there. You know, just being living in this community, growing up in this community, I walk around, see the art that we have in Central, you know, the park here. I like the art that we see on the side of the buildings here, that Six Ten Protestant people have done that and truly improved the aesthetic of the city. I'm all for that. And that's, this is one part of it, but it should also be funded as well. And I think that, you know, the part of all this thing comes down to is the proper management of money. And that's why we, you know, we take these big bonds out and pay for things, but we're better, you know, able to go ahead and look at the big thing that we're doing here, and that's what the strategic plan is. We don't have these special strategic initiatives. When you intertwine all those initiatives, that's when you have the plan. And the strategic plan needs to be, it needed to be developed a long time ago. I mean, this is hurry up to catch up with a strategic plan, but part of that plan is the arts. We have to, you know, foster the arts, and we have to maintain the arts, and just like all the other recreational facilities, I don't see, and I'm not putting the sports facilities ahead of the arts, and I'm not putting the arts ahead of recreational facilities for sports. And that's part of the whole, you know, big picture of how to make Winter Haven a better city, and that needs to be part of the strategic plan.
This question is for Mr. Jardine. Says, "What would you do if elected to help maintain and enhance the good partnership between the city and downtown developers to ensure that that progress continues?"
Well, first of all, I'd get the Chamber of Commerce involved. First of all, I'd get the Chamber of Commerce involved, at least to meet with some of the business owners. If they don't want to come to a chamber meeting, I think they should have a couple that go visiting the people, because a lot of times, business people don't have the time, so maybe the chamber could stretch it out a little bit, go visit them, to get some input from the businesses, and if they see anything that could help, get their opinion on a one-on-one basis, as they can't make meetings. But you got to have cohesion between the citizens as well as the chamber and the city commission as well. When you ask the city commission for assistance on something, they should just say, no, I'll check on it and not get back with you. They should check on it and respond back, which I had encounters, which I asked several city commissioners to help me with issues, they said they'd call me and get back with me. Never happens. The county's the same way. Call the city, the county, send emails, the county managers don't even respond. So it needs to be a little bit better communication between the people and the city government.
This question is for Mr. Brinson. "What ideas and suggestions would you be making regarding increasing the city tax base?"
We've already discussed the fire fee, so I'm not going to go into that again. The second thing, obviously, is annexation. The issue with annexation is that you, it can't be something you just try to do in the spur of the moment. You have to have a long-term plan for how you're going to approach it, because you've got to convince a majority of the citizens in that area to want to annex. And that takes a concerted effort, concerted advocacy, concerted effort at building incentives for them to want to do that, including tax incentives and services. We have to make that case, and that case can't be made in six months or a year, it has to be made over time. So as part of our strategic planning process, I'd want to have, you know, three, five, and ten-year goals for annexation, where we need to decide which areas we're going to target first, which specific areas we're going to target first, how we're going to target those areas, and how we're going to spend years, not just a few months, advocating for and making it beneficial for the citizens in those areas to annex into the city. That's why the strategic plan is so important. I want to define that, we haven't really defined that today. Strategic planning, in my view, takes your vision of where you Strategic planning, in my view, takes your vision of where you want to be, which is a city that has a broader tax base in this case, and actually sets reasonable one, two, three, four, five-year goals and numeric targets to getting there so that you're focused on your long-term goals on a day-to-day basis. And by going through that exercise, we can come up with an annexation plan, but we have to commit to that exercise. Over the past four years, we have not committed to that exercise until very, very recently, in part in response to staff, in part in response to the efficiency committee's work. And so I'm going to spearhead that and make sure that we have a clear annexation plan that covers a multi-year process to make that happen in specific target areas.
Mr. Chichetto, says, "Many young people are forced to leave Winter Haven in order to find a job. What will you do to bring jobs and businesses to Winter Haven in order to keep these young people around?"
Thank you. You know, economic development has been on the forefront for myself and the commission as a whole for the last four years. We saw the impact we've had with CSX, we saw the impact we've had with downtown. And I would say, leaving Winter Haven to find a job, all that starts kind of at the base level of our education, and letting folks know that when you go away to UCF or UF or even FSU, you can come back to Winter Haven and find a job. And there are opportunities out there. And I'll use myself as an example, I'll look at Katie as an example. When you go away, you got to remember where you came from, and there are opportunities out there. And it starts with providing the right information. It also starts in our schools, because I'll tell you right now, our labor force, whether in construction, underground utilities, it's very poor. You can't find quality help in those areas. But if you're in the IT department, if you're in a education level, you can always find a job at Polk County School Board, there's work out there, you know, in all aspects there. If you're looking for new jobs, new businesses, that's what we've done. We've created incentives that already exist. We've created an investment in our downtown, we've created an investment at CSX, and we'll continue to do that. And that would lure folks back for good, high-paying jobs. You can look at our hospital, Bay Care is expanding. They've done a tremendous thing in the last short amount of time when it comes to adding new jobs. If some folks go away to law school, you've got two attorneys here on the board there, you know, looking to become council members, they've come back to town after leaving, you know, to go away to school. So there is opportunity, and I think we have to do a better job of selling the opportunity and pointing out the fact that Winter Haven is a great place to live, work, and play and raise a family.
Mr. Garcia, we had a late question come in directed to you, and it relates to the nonprofits that you mentioned in your opening statement. The person was asked what the name of those nonprofits are and what their missions are.
The two nonprofits is CIA Chaplains in Action. It's a religious non-for-profit organization, and what we do is, we work with law enforcement, emergency response teams to make sure that they have what they need to do their job correctly. Chaplains are very important with law enforcement, hospital, prisons, and in the street. We also have the Keep Our Kids Safe Foundation. And we deal with kids, single families, and homeless families that are in the streets. We help with clothes, with food, with utility payments, rent payments, anything that has to do with helping them and their quality of life. To make sure that we don't have homelessness, that we don't have children who are on vacation from school and are hungry. We have partners in the community like Regions Bank, like Chick-fil-A. People go there, we have information, we are building relationships here in Winter Haven as we speak. And like I said, in November, we will be at Regions Bank on First Street, and we will be handing out food for Thanksgiving, and we will be doing the same thing for Christmas for kids with the participation of the police department. We're trying to get the chief, he's been very helpful and supportive of us, and we're trying to get him to come out and give out some towards the community. So if you guys need more information, I will definitely be outside. I'll give you my card, and you can look up the organizational mission and mission statement, and I'm an open book, you ask a question, I will give you an honest answer. Thank you.
Mr. Hogan, what do you see as being the number one priority of city government?
The number one priority, in my opinion, is you representing the citizens of Winter Haven. And I don't make a difference between the citizens of Winter Haven and the city staff of Winter Haven, it's one. It's one group. We have to ensure that we're representing the whole city, not just a part. Yes, can we fix everything at one time? No. But we must have a systematic approach to making sure that each part of the city and each, whether it's individuals or whether it's businesses, are having the same benefits and are growing in the same way.
Well, candidates, thank you very much for your participation this morning, and thank you for the civility. It took a lot of my fun away, but I appreciate it. And thank you, everyone, for coming out.
Again, thank you, everyone, and I would like to give a big thank you to Sherret Bun Chilton P.A. for sponsoring this morning's breakfast, for all of you to decide, yes, thank you very much, for all of you. Remember, Election Day is on November 3rd, Tuesday, November 3rd. Please encourage everyone to get out the vote. If these video equipment are recording on three different things, if one of them worked, the video will be online this afternoon, as well as the candidate questionnaires are on the blog. Share that information. As you see people talk about the election on social media, share the information. We want to make sure that people are informed, and that people know that Election Day is on November 3rd. The last city commission election, I think 2,500 people voted. Let's see that number go up. So thank you for making a conscious decision to be here this morning, and have a productive rest of the day.